We'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes from August 7th and August 12th.
May I just make a comment on the minutes from August 7th?
Please.
As they're contained in the packet and my review of that and whether, what had ever taken place after the meeting was adjourned on the 7th, I'm not convinced that there was a meeting that needed to be minuted. And so I threw a little bit of additional investigation on that. And I'd asked the board to not approve those at this time.
Okay, just the meeting minutes from August 7th?
Just the 7th.
Okay.
Okay.
At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 12th, 2019 as presented, and table the minutes from August 7th, 2019.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Darrell.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the claims for payment.
None this week.
Right, okay. Utility permits and secondary roads department.
I would make a motion to approve the two utility permits as presented. Permit 814-19A and 814-19B.
I will second.
Okay. Discussion, we have one, it's just 814-19.
But when we added a second one, then we just added B to it. Yeah?
Oh, all right.
Yep. That's just the way.
So it's the same, okay, all right. Okay, I did not catch that, sorry, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Julie Winter.
Did you have anything on rates?
Yeah, no updates.
I've been there, been sick around vacation since the last meeting, but things have been ho-humming.
Okay.
Did you say sick of vacation?
Yeah, that'd be nice too.
Okay, Julie Winter, annual request for matching funds for Region 6 Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
So it's been a busy year for the Housing Trust Fund, and I'm sure you're all aware. Today, we're talking about the local match for the Housing Trust Fund. We are preparing the application. For those of you who don't know, Region 6 Housing Trust Fund is a regional trust fund for the four county area. We apply for this grant every year from the Iowa Finance Authority. So we're preparing that application for 2020 grant year now, that is due October 1st. And on October 1, we will be applying for a total of $240,000, $241,20 from four state funds. In order to access those state funds, we need a 25% local match. So for that local match, we ask all four of the counties in our region to help contribute to that on a per capita income basis. So today, I'm asking Harden County to do their local share. And that local share would be $11,094 for the local share in order to access those 2020 funds. So to give you an idea of what Harden County has gotten, right now, we track all of our counties on a per capita basis for how much that spend, how much of spending is going to each county for each grant year. Harden County is actually ahead of schedule per capita compared to other counties right now over the last five years, from 2015 to right now, we're spending down 2019 grant funds. Harden County has, we have spent $292,407 in Harden County. And that's slightly more than what the per capita split would be for Harden County, which would be $253,029. So I would say that we are very successful in getting projects in Harden County. I believe most recently, we've been working on projects in Eldora, Radcliffe, and Iowa Falls. And we do have several other projects, project applications in the works for Harden County right now. So we will continue to pursue those projects in Harden County in 2020 and maintain that per capita split as much as we can based on demand.
Can you explain the type of projects?
The projects, these would all be owner occupied. I'm not exactly sure of which projects. I know for the 2019 grant funds that we're working on right now, we've spent about $15,000 so far on this particular grant year in Harden County. And I believe that those grant funds were for a house in Eldora. If you would like more detail, I can certainly get that to you or provide that to you.
No, I'm fine.
Unfortunately, I don't have complete project detail.
Okay. All right, great.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a mo-
Go ahead, Lance.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to the Region 6 Housing Trust Fund, Harden County's cash contribution.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Environmental health sharing with Marshall County.
This morning, I would like to make a motion that we notify Marshall County that we will be entering a shared agreement, that we haven't got the final document yet. But from what I understand, talking to Jessica and Attorney Meyer, that we'll be ready by tomorrow that we can address them. But we will be entering a sharing agreement for a period not to exceed 60 days from the date of adoption of that 2080 agreement when it is signed. That, so I'll leave my motion there and we can discuss it.
I'll second to go into the discussion.
So my intention is to give Marshall County the appropriate notice without leaving them burdened without having environmental health and assistance to their planning and zoning person. But also let them know that the 60 days should give them time to advertise and hire and get somebody on board. I believe it's imperative that Harden County continue to maintain Jessica Sheridan in her capacity here because we do have day-to-day operations that that continuity needs to remain in place. And so for the long term, I believe it's in our best interest to keep her in the county and working for us. But at the same time, I want to be neighborly in the next 60 days to provide them assistance after the loss of their employee.
I guess 60 days, I didn't know, I don't know if I'm comfortable putting that deadline on the 60 days. Would we revisit that at day 50 to extend if need be?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that. I, yeah, if there aren't qualified people, I think that's something that, you know, we can address at that point. But yeah, I have no problem. I think initially, it'd be nice to give them six, put that in there. And if they need an extension, that they can come back to us and request that if they have a hard time getting something in place by then.
Okay. So I guess the, there's a 20, it'd be a 2080 agreement on the table. We're asking that to be put on tomorrow.
Correct, because we need to make sure.
So what are we really making the motion on then? Is it a suggestion?
To give them notice and letting them know because I think we're just out there, they're hanging, waiting for us to say something. I think it's just a professional courtesy to let them know what our intentions are.
Okay.
And I've discussed a matter with Jessica Sheridan and her supervisor, Micah Cutler. And so I think that this would be our best route.
Okay. Well, I'm not comfortable with the 60 days, but I understand as long as we can revisit. We're not going to leave them high and dry if it's 70 or 90 days.
Correct.
I mean, just, just for, just to make sure that it's a short term and not a long-term fix for them. So, yeah, as long as we can revisit that too, I would agree. Okay.
Maybe we guys should explain what we're talking about. Because I feel like people don't know what I'm talking about. Thank you. Marshall County's environmental health and zoning administrator passed away a few weeks ago. And so it was pretty unexpected. So we've been helping out down there. Well, I've, yeah, I've been down there quite a few times, helping with their stuffing and building permits and stuff like that. So we've been talking about, we think Marshall County might have been interested in sharing services with Harden County. And we kind of decided that's not in the best interest of everybody, well.
We haven't, we haven't decided.
Well, okay, we haven't decided.
It's just, it's just been an idea out there and that's all I know.
But, so that's what we're saying is that we're going to put a, for now, we're going to still continue to help them out until they can find somebody to replace their personal passenger.
Do you get, for helping out Marshall County, do you get some pay then from Marshall County?
That would be in the 2080, that would be in the 2080 agreement that will be on tomorrow's agenda. Since we didn't get it, it couldn't be on today's agenda. But it'll be on tomorrow's agenda as to what all covers, all those things. But in general, no different than when Darrell left, their county engineer came down and filled in for Taylor. Or before Taylor was hired, we used their county engineer down here. If I recall, they didn't charge us anything for that.
No, I don't believe they did.
It's just counties working together. But the 2080 will spell everything out. And I don't have it in front of me to tell you what it says.
I have seen a draft of what they have proposed on Marshall County's end. And they are planning to compensate. I think the answer to your question is yes, we're not doing it for free.
If it were a short, much shorter amount of time, I think that would be an issue. But since we are, I mean, it's already been months, maybe over a month since we started.
Pretty close.
It's been almost exactly a month since we started helping there. And if we're going to end up going out for an undetermined, potentially amount of time, then we kind of need to make sure that we're getting compensated for things we're doing there and mistaking away from Harden County.
Right. I agree. So, okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public comments. Julie.
I was wondering, is, um, my attorney, the question on why is it saying that there are newer lawyers? Had you spoken anything about that?
I, I emailed him and I haven't heard back. I know he was preparing for a couple of high-profile cases earlier this week and so. But you did receive my inquiry.
I did, I did. And I thought I'd be fine. I was just, just chatting. I will, yeah.
Any other public comments? Pauline.
Has the state audit come in yet for the?
I have, I am not aware of anything coming in at this point, no.
Have you been notified of anything?
Nothing.
So do we know?
No.
Have any idea what it's going to cost then yet or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
I, I have no clue.
And then have we, have Harden County, have we done our regular audit? Because don't we do an audit then every year too or so?
We, yes, we have an annual audit, but it doesn't audit everything that I think the state is auditing, I guess. But yeah, we've had our annual audit for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of this year. It's not, I don't believe she's met with us yet, but she's working on the audit that, for fiscal year 2019, 1819. And their work, our audit firm is working on that currently. But I'm, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what all was being audited by the state. But I don't think our audit firm audits everything that is, that the state is including. So I don't think any of that will be addressed in our audit, but we'll know that when it gets presented later this year.
Do we know what that is going to run?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, you'd have to go, it's, it's a contract.
Yeah. The auditor's office has the-
Off the top of my head, it's up there.
Contract, yeah.
In the auditor's office, what they charge us annually for this. I think we did a three-year contract.
Three-year contract usually.
With Bowman Miller.
And that's on file in the auditor's office. So you can go up there and find out what, what the contract is amount that we, we pay them. Yes, sir.
I'm just a concerned citizen about the secondary roads in Harden County and what the plan going forth is. But I, I just was kind of wondering, what do we got in the works or what do you got for plans going forth? The one I'm mostly concerned about is B Avenue. But there's, right down the line, there's road after road that needs attention. And not necessarily the whole road, but there's, there's spots in the road that are-
Sand.
Yesterday, on B Avenue, we had three tenths of rain in Ackley, Iowa. We had three tents. Three tents is a, is a good drizzle. And B Avenue was almost impassable.
And you should see why.
And I'm talking mud. There, there's not enough rock on that road to put in a shovel. And they, they've been putting the sand on for the last five years. It's garbage, absolute garbage. The, the money that was spent on that sand, you could have just well taken it and thrown out that window. Because that, that's what, that's what you got out of it. Now you got a mess. And on that same avenue, usually when we get a rain like that and the, and the road gets all tore up, then it will dry up. So then you got this thing all going on. And then you don't see a grader for like a minimum of five days and usually 10 days. And ironically, the grader was out this morning on that road doing it. That all, all he's doing is just moving mud or dirt. That's all that's out there. There's no crown left at all on the road. The water has no place to go. I don't know how to say this word, it makes sense, but 40 years ago, there was a lot of people that lived out in rural Iowa. There was probably three to four houses in a section, maybe. Now there isn't that many people out there. But there's still, there's still the same amount of commerce or even more commerce being done out there. And these roads are not being taken care of. This, this ball has been dropped. And I'm not blaming you guys for it. I'm not blaming anybody for it. I'm just saying this ball's been dropped. And it's in serious, just, just repair.
Taylor?
How much do you want me to go? Because we've answered this question like 40 different times, so.
His, his question on the sand that was being put down, we're no longer buying from the quarries.
We are, but we're buying different material. If you look at what we have put down this year, it is, it's much bigger.
Yep.
Will it break down eventually and be like everything else? Probably. But, you know, if you put it on more often. I would rather buy, you know, we still have the same amount of money. My thought is we're going to be buying less material, but it's better material. Obviously, this year, we're buying more because we have to. But going forward for our regular maintenance, we're going to be buying less, but it is higher quality. I think that's a better plan. Am I wrong? I don't know. Find out. I think it's a better idea, though.
And you talked about B Avenue and Ackley.
V.
Oh, V.
V is in Victor.
Yep.
Yeah, I misunderstood that the first, first time too.
Well, one of the-
And the next road over, the next road over is, is that U?
Yes.
U Avenue? On U Avenue, U Avenue was tore up really bad. So they finally, they bring some inch and a half rock in and they dunk it on top of a hill. What it, it wasn't even needed there. I don't know, I'm not micromanaging or, I'm just saying, somebody's going to get out there and tell these truck drivers where this stuff needs to be put. Because that, that load of rock is, and then they put inch and a half rock up there. And this B Avenue can use some inch and a half rock, some serious rock. And it's, I don't think it's going to be able to go through another winter, spring. I honestly don't. And I, and I was told this spring that, you know, once it dried up this summer, we're going to, we're going to pay attention to this, we're going to get after it. I haven't seen nothing more than a grader.
And everything he said on B goes for Y as well? And Y is much more heavily used with dump trucks and farm equipment.
I, I've gone through and looked at some of these hog buildings, how much taxes are being gathered off these hog buildings. There's a three-mile stretch here, there's over $15,000 gathered off of taxes off these hog sites. And they don't have any more gravel on their road than what B Avenue has. So I mean, at least you're treating everybody the same way.
I mean, if there were endless funds, we'd have a lot of different situation, but.
Can you answer me this question? Is there a pile of rock sitting at Martin Marietta that was purchased for Harden County through FEMA?
Not from FEMA.
Not through FEMA?
No.
Okay. I was told wrong then, it was just, just what I was told, I didn't know the backside.
Can you explain the FEMA process?
Sure. The pile he's referring to, yeah, we buy that every year. The FEMA process is going to be very long.
Hold on.
They will pay us back, yeah.
So we have to spend the money and then they reimburse more or less, is how FEMA works.
And if it was a smaller project, it'd take a couple of months. We aren't going to see the money for three to five years, would be my guess.
Does that answer?
But at least you will see the money, though. It's not like you're just putting it out there.
Correct.
You're going to get, you're going to, you're going to see a return back, aren't you?
After their determination.
As long as we do all the paperwork right, yes. There's a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot.
And I'm not discriminating, but.
No, you're not, you're not going to see all the money. They're not going to pay you a dollar for a dollar.
No.
Okay.
No.
Even if you're putting 50 set dollars out there, it's not a bad deal.
But you still have the time exchange before you get it.
Right, correct.
Okay.
We've spent well over a million dollars already.
And Robert, you and I have talked about, you know, there's many variables. The weather, then there's the material, then there's the human part of, you know, are operators effectively doing their job? And it, that's, it's a mixed bag there. And so there's only so many variables, I think, that Taylor can do or has a part of. But I do agree that with you that, you know, if we have equipment operators not effectively doing their job, we need to remediate the training or find somebody that can do the job. And that, that, that's a huge issue, I think, that the difference in the human impact from area to area.
And getting the crowns put back in the roads are-
And get the curb and gutter out.
A big part of that, too.
Yeah.
It's almost been away. I, I'm not kidding.
I'm, I know, that's one thing that Taylor has definitely worked on or is working on with, with these guys.
And you can't build a crown without materials.
Right.
So this year, they're kind of, it's almost impossible this year until they get the material, but they're trying.
Yeah, I don't, I-
I've kind of, I don't want to be a problem, I want to be a part of the solution if I can be. But I, what would, what would happen if we take a look at, and we'd have to do this statewide, look at like a one penny or two pennies per, per gallon of diesel fuel? These guys are the ones that are tearing it up, these semi haulers.
I mean, I think you, Robert, when you come to that one, I think you're going to defeat the purpose of that because most of the money doesn't come back to the county. It would go, most of the money would go to the state, the DOT. So now you're taxing money for your gravel roads that you're not receiving. It makes more sense to make a local tax, and I don't think we can, for the ag diesel.
I'm just wondering what happened, it seemed like 40 years ago, there was money for rock every year. It seemed like roads got rocked and-
Equipment, equipment was half the size, too.
It was what?
Half the size 40 years ago.
What was?
Equipment.
Equipment.
What's happened, though, with Harden County is every, every year, like when my husband worked with Martin Marietta and the county for a while before he had his accident, every year Harden County would divide up in sections. And this section would be done one year, and then the next year, this section, and the next year, this section, and then this section. And we have not done that for years. And that's why our roads are all bad in Harden County.
The, the last year we did that, Pauline, the section that was done was in Alden Township, up there in that quadrant. Okay? The very next year, they didn't have enough rock. Otherwise, they would not have seen rock for three years. It only took one year for them.
And Robert, can I address? Last week, Ms. Dunn asked why we can't put, or Explorer, looking at a surcharge or excise on manure haulers. I mean, they're, just like you said, those are the implements that are tearing up the road.
They're hauling 10,000 gallons of manure down gravel roads.
And so that's what, when we were talking earlier about looking into a way to permit and, you know, find out if we can legally, you know, ask to put some type of, you know, surcharge, that's what Attorney Meyer is looking into is, you know, can we legally do that? Taylor, last week, explained that manure haulers aren't an implement of animal husbandry. So it looks not an implement of animal husbandry.
Implement of, they're not a farm equipment.
Right, but that's a technical term. And so, you know, I think if we allow Attorney Meyer to do his due diligence, we can see what we can do about, you know, bringing some type of funding in by implementing, you know, some type of fee. Because we have to, I mean, I think we can all admit that those vehicles are, or those implements are the ones that are, you know, more likely to damage the road, not your F-150 and not Julie's Volkswagen Beetle, I, you know. Go ahead, Julie.
To give credit where credit is due, it was another gentleman who, who was a rural person who initially brought up the tax or something on that. But we do, in fact, the state needs a tax on animal units and like hogs, chickens, cattle, whatever. I believe that a taxation to help maintain roads and to clean the waters. But of course, they can't do that, but it's just something that our legislature needs to address.
Well, and another, talking about the legislature, this is one of the things that happened this year, this, this last session, too. Is they, legislature approved putting heavier trucks on the road. What's the weight? Forest, for forest tree trucks?
Forests were 130,000 pounds. And the special haul vehicles was, would that be 140,000 pounds?
So the legislature passes laws to allow heavier trucks on county roads, but yet the state DOT takes a majority of the funding for roads.
And the up-
So.
That's what, you guys got to get up there and scream a little louder.
Well, we try and we have, there's lobbyists, we have lobbyists and stuff, too, but.
Come up with any sort of solution?
Well.
Any sort of a timeframe, anything?
It's, I would have to say part of it is, no.
What's that?
I can't give you a timeframe.
No.
I have not given a single person a timeframe all year. And I'm, I'm not going to commit to anything because it's so widespread.
So we're pouring more money to it so that FEMA will reimburse us. The timeframe's on FEMA when we get reimbursed it so that we can pour more money to it again. How about that for a timeframe?
I think you left the door open, but that's okay.
Well, I can't answer the question.
And it's, it's kind of money allows. I mean, it's not an open checkbook for his department.
He has a truck shop out there, and he's got to turn business away because the trucks can't even get out there.
I'll look at any individual road we have to.
I mean, after the meeting, can you meet with Robert? I mean, I, as I explained, Taylor's not afraid to go for a drive with somebody and.
I don't want to be the squeaky wheel that can get my way.
No.
Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of other roads.
Oh, yeah, there are.
This one, I need help.
There are.
This is incredible, three tenths of rain, my God. And, and the road just turned to crap. I had my grandson with me, he didn't know if we were going to get through it.
So.
Can't, can't we watch our spending more? When I think about this, why didn't we have a state come in and do an audit which is going to cost us thousands of dollars?
That isn't something that was asked, I guess I don't know what the process was for that, but.
That we could have spent on roads when we do, when we have to do an audit anyway.
Not necessarily, because we're limited as to how, how much funding we can provide from the general fund, which would in turn be the same one that provides, I mean, that would pay for an audit. would pay for an audit. We're limited as to how many, how many dollars of general fund monies we can transfer to the engineers department for rock or for operating expense. So, the state...
But if we have this extra pot of pot, I mean, like Jessica explained one day, you know, with the pot, so if we have...
That was the lost funds.
After we've done and we have all the extra in the pot, then if we have this extra, then can we put it in to the roads and that? It just seems to me like...
If there's extra...
Hardin County's spending a bunch, a bunch of money that we don't need to spend. We could throw over into the roads and fix these roads. They've not had any rock on for umpteen gazillion years. When I said, "We used to rock and we used to split up..."
I know, I remember that, too.
And we used to rock all the time, so we didn't have these problems. Now...
So, this year, if we were doing that, only one quarter of the county would've gotten rock? What would you have done with all the rest of the roads?
I'm saying now, this year, we're gonna have to spend it all, but once we get all the roads fixed, then let's do, you know, then let's do, okay, let's split it up. I don't know how you split it up, but then let's keep splitting it up and put rock on, you know, the county, so we don't have this problem again.
Rock's a lot like your equipment, you know? Yeah, I got brand new rock this year, and I got a brand new grader this year, but that grader's gonna wear out, and so does that rock, so it's, it's a continual thing.
Yeah.
And I just think that the ball got dropped, that's all, okay? Now, we gotta pick up that ball and, and start playing the game.
Except the ball's a lot heavier now.
It is a lot heavier now.
Statewide, statewide, when you say the ball's got dropped.
Yeah.
Yeah, the...
I think so. We're not the only county, okay?
And I, and you can talk...
I don't wanna be like every other county.
And we can talk gravels, we can talk bridges, you can talk pavements. Statewide, it's, we are so far behind the eight ball.
Yep.
It's gonna take a long time to catch up.
Yep.
And a lot of that is because of the restrictions that were put on.
And when you say...
I don't disagree with you on that. The ball's dropped.
Yeah.
But you only got so much to work with.
Right. I mean, I, I think once these wagons got over three hundred bushel, I think the county should've taken the serious look then. And that's, that's been forty years ago.
Yeah.
I guess, and another thing I would recommend is you have legislators that come to your town hall meetings here and there, they're used to hearing complaints from counties. I think they get tired of hearing complaints from counties. All they do is, is hear from us. It's constituents that also need to address them. It's not, not just your board of supervisors, or not the treasurer on, on her issues. They, if there's issues at the county level, they also need to hear that from, from the rest of the county.
Okay.
They do always listen to those. Representatives need to be replaced because they're not responding and they're not listening.
Are there any other public comments?
I wanna thank you for your time.
Yes.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Michelle?
I just have a comment. Tax statements aren't out yet. Been getting a lot of phone calls. We've had some issues with our software that I haven't got them out yet. They're almost there to the point where I get to okay them, and they'll get printed and mailed out. I'm hoping that they'll get mailed out next week.
Okay.
I'm not putting any promises on that, but that's where, where we're at with that. And hopefully, they will get out and people will get their bills so that they can start paying, so...
Is this the first year?
This is the second year.
Second year.
And we kinda had the same issues as we had last year, so I'm doing a rerun, and I do have a new outsourced company this year. Kept it in the state also again, but, and they're doing a great job for me. And so, the look of the property tax statements are gonna be a little bit different. I believe I have something in the works with the paper to show what that's gonna look like.
Okay.
I haven't notified our, I had just the paper contact me the other day at Iowa Falls, and she's going to do an article, I believe, on what that new statement's gonna look like. It's, it's basically the same, it just has an updated look and feel to it, but all the same information's gonna be on the property tax statement.
Okay.
So, I just want people to be aware that they haven't lost their statement, we just haven't got it out in the mail yet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business? All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll go ahead and reopen the meeting to address an email that I received from Dave McDaniel on Monday, saying that Saturday night, Thomas Creighton handled the medical examiner call for the county as there was no one else available. State medical examiner's office, as well as Dr. Loughlin, were conferred with prior to him handling it, and they were fine with it. We just need to get him signed up for performing those duties in the county, kind of adverb there. So...
Well, I talked to Thomas this morning, I had a lot of questions. One of the, one of the things I, I question is if you're in a company vehicle, should we be reimbursing the commission instead of him during these core, and I'm talking the core hours, if he's, if it's after hours and he wants to go do a job, I, I don't have an issue with this. But I don't know, I don't know if during the work hours, what are his core hours or anything else that he's set? You just don't punch in, drive over there, drive back on our vehicle. Currently, he's driving his own vehicle, so I don't have an issue with that. But, once we get our own vehicle, now it could be more in-depth. So, instead, would we reimburse the commission, and then they can set his core hours, or they can set that as part of his job or bylaws? And now, I was just talking to Daryl here, quick, and...
I'd like the opportunity to review Chapter 29C, I believe it is, to see if this comes within the scope of commission, if it comes within the scope of a coordinator. Not saying that Thomas can't be, can't perform those duties, but is he performing them under 29C here, or is he performing them under some other provision, which would then guide, who are we paying, who are we compensating for this? And so, I'd like to kinda sort through those jurisdictional lines a little bit more before we go any further here.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have a few concerns. I'm, I'm not comfortable today with making an appointment, number one. We haven't posted the position, and I know we, there's a need, but...
Now, I've spoken with Marla in the past, and she said they've really got enough people now, that they didn't, don't really need that many more. However, according to Dave's email, there's no one else available.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't really want to open it up, because the comment I got from Marla was if you have, say we have a dozen people that'll do this, you only get called when there's a death. You're not gonna get anybody to do it, because if you only go once a year, you know, not that you're doing that just for the money by any means, but...
But you gotta be home.
You, yes.
Who, who makes the call? I mean, when, when there's a need, how is the investigator...
The sheriff's office would call if it's an unattended or suspicious death. At that point, you know, the sheriff's office would then put out a call for a death, medical death investigator. So, you know, that's the process. So, I, I understand that, I mean, there was a need the other day, and shoot, when we were short, we had other people that were able to fill in. So, I, I understand that the need is there, but not posting it, it looks like some preferential treatment as well.
Well, I think with, my thought is with Thomas, I, I believe he's already had this training, and he's...
Right, yep.
He's...
I have no doubt about that, but I...
But we're gonna have to send him to training to do it.
Right. But does that go against the county's hiring policies? I mean, I believe the standard HR procedures haven't been followed. We haven't received the official documentation. I mean, when we have anybody else apply for Board of Commission appointment, we have them fill out paperwork, there still needs to be a background check and all those things done. We haven't done that. You know, those are issues. And then I believe that, like Daryl said, due to the potential for professional boundary issues, that Heartland Risk is going to, you know, address on August 20th, and Daryl's wanting to do his due diligence to see what's covered, what's not covered. I think there's a lot of cracks that things can slip between, okay? The hypotheticals are endless, but I think, you know, if, the emergency management coordinator position is very critical to being available to do that. And, you know, if, if you're out waiting for the DCI to come and pick up a body, and there's an emergency management situation, incident that occurs at the same time, where do we want the county's assets? On the emergency management side, or sitting watching a body? I think there are all things that we need to address, and I, once again, I believe Thomas, I know he is educated and trained in this, but I think we need to follow the process, make sure that he understands that, you know, if he's working here as the emergency management coordinator, that he would need to go home, get a personal vehicle, change out of that uniform, and move the liability and the work comp risk to that position.
I guess I, I don't know that I agree with that. I'd like to see what other counties do, cause I can't imagine...
Well, I can just tell you what Franklin County did in the past was, you know, you, you can't, you know, be on the clock at one job, go take care of the other.
Those are some things that would have to be definitely addressed, I'm sure.
Right. So, I think, you know, moving into this would be hasty today without doing, you know, the proper, setting the guidelines and everything, because this is a unique position. It's not like Marla, it's not like, I think it's Amber, you know, it's not like the others where there isn't gonna be any conflict of interest. In this situation, there's a great deal of potential of conflict of interest, and I agree, Chapter 29 does need to be evaluated and make sure that we're not opening ourselves up for, you know, issues going forward. So, I concur with Attorney Meyer.
Although I don't have a problem with the appointment, I mean, I think he's competent. I don't, I don't know if there were any openings, and that would go a long way, because anything else, if we didn't, if we had open seats, we go find somebody to fill the seats.
Right.
Or we try to. If there aren't any open seats, then I understand why we'd take the applications and everything else, and then all the background checks, obviously, that you went through. Again, I'm okay, after talking to Daryl, it's out in the hallway there, she brought up some good points that I need answers to, before I move forward.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is, I think after we had the position open the last time, I think there's been at least one application, cause I'd received a phone call, somebody saying, "Hey, I've applied for this and never heard back." And I said, "Well, that's because we aren't currently seeking anybody out."
I know of one person that, that was interested, and there were absolutely no, there was no education or qualification behind...
Right.
After I spoke with Marla about it.
Yeah.
I don't know the same person, so...
Right, yeah.
Well, I'm not, I'm not after everybody else's applications coming in. I'm more concerned about, in this case, I, I wanna know what Daryl has to say.
Yeah, I mean, and I can agree with that.
Otherwise, I, I don't have, I don't have an issue. Currently, he's in his own vehicle, he's exempt from overtime. I, I know that some things could be brought up, okay, if he wants to do that, he can take two hours of vacation time to go do that and be paid for it. But is that what's gonna happen? What's the process that's gonna happen? Or do we now pay, since it's paid above and beyond the job, do we pay the commission, and then now that's part of his job? I don't know. And that's why you're, Chapter 29, can that even be part of the job?
That's the first question. Right.
So, I, I think I'm better off holding off now.
And the second question is, do you wanna blur lanes anymore than they may already be?
Well, I was gonna say, we've already had some dialogue with Heartland Risk about, you know, job duties, and just because you're qualified to operate a crane, do, do we want you to operate a crane as, you know, part of the county attorney's office? You know, which job duties do we want to delegate? What are gonna be covered by our insurance? We're not, after talking to Judy Funk, we're not like ICAP, where there's a huge separation between what they perceive as risk and what Heartland Risk perceives as risk. And so, I think we need to be in line with what Heartland Risk is going to, you know, be okay with as well. Because in this case, one size does not fit all.
It goes back to, is it even possible?
Right.
That's, I, I can't do anything till I know that answer.
Because I know we'd had, you know, discussions that Thomas is willing to, you know, utilize his paramedic skills. Well, we were given the explanation that that was not allowable under Heartland Risk. Heartland Risk doesn't insure people providing medical services. They don't provide insurance for people doing firefighting duties. And Judy said the one case that's different is Chickasaw Rescue Squad, but they, they administer no health care services. So, that's just one of the differences between being an ICAP entity and being a Heartland Risk pool member. And at the end of the day, our insurance company, along with Iowa Code, is going to dictate what the job can and can't do. And I think Judy and Carl, and who's the other gal, Lance?
Judy.
The other Judy, have done a very good job of spelling out what, you know, job duties the emergency management coordinator can and can't do, according just to our, our insurance. Not in saying that the person in the role isn't capable, but they just don't insure certain activities and job duties. So, I, I think this is, it's a very valuable discussion to have, because you'd hate to be, you know, moved so fast that at the end of the day, something happens, and then Heartland Risk says, "Why didn't you confer with us or ask us this?" Because now, we've got a claim or an incident that really should've been cut off before it started, so...
With, with all this, Dave's not here to help defend, and Thomas can be here either. How long could you, time do you think it would take for you to come up with an answer? If we were to recess till tomorrow, can we do that?
Well, I can probably get the, whether the commissioner or the coordinator has...
Without their approval, but it...
If this is within their job description or jurisdiction, I could probably get you that answer by the end of the day. So, by tomorrow, yes. Then you got these other questions about, are we, are we, if it's, if, if Thomas Creighton is gonna be an investigator, and it's on the county's list of people that could be called, when, when Thomas does go out, is he going out as, just like anybody else that would be called, or is he going out as, in his capacity as coordinator? And that's, who do we make the check out to?
Right. And I, I think it's warranted to have those two in the room as we talk about this. That's why I'm asking if we could recess till tomorrow, we're gonna meet at eleven.
Dave won't be here tomorrow.
He's on rest of the week.
Okay.
But I think it's something that...
So, I would just recommend we, we table it then, until further research can be done.
And we won't meet next week, so...
It'll be a couple of weeks.
If you're to say regardless of what lane he was in at the time he performed these services, he's gonna be compensated somehow for that? So, I mean, we, it's not, it's not an academic exercise, it, we have to decide.
Yeah, and I think the one thing, when you talk about compensation, if he's doing it on the clock as part of that job, if that is what's determined, that might change the rate for the other people. If...
I don't understand.
Your, your next commission meeting's on the 20th, correct?
Well, the question is, is our medical death investigators are paid so much per case?
Right.
So, if you're, you constitute three hours of Thomas's time, I don't know what his hour, what the hourly breakdown would be out of his salary to do it, you'd wanna make sure it's comparable to what the other people are making. You couldn't have a different dollar amount for that.
Well, that commission would have to determine whether or not that's gonna be part of his job or not.
Right.
And that determines on what the... And that determines on what the law is.
Well, and the job description says something.
I think we're, I think we're getting into things that are just a lot easier to determine whether they even need to be addressed until after Daryl does his.
That sounds good.
His investigation into code.
Something simple is very complex. I understand. So your recommendation would be to table till we meet at a later date?
It'll probably be after next week now, so.
Okay. I'll second that.
You were the motion. You were the motion.
I made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.